Please silence your cell phones and stand for the invocation given.
Please join me in the Our Father, Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and give us all trust and justice; as we give those who trust us with patience; make us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The pledge, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no two just as one. We're missing, we're missing, don't we?
Public cards?
I have four. The first one is from Bob Gray. On behalf of all ring users of the Batavia Ice Arena, I urge all city council members to support the proposed ice arena improvements listed in the facility capital plan in this year's budget. These improvements consist of a bathroom upgrade and replacement of the exterior front doors were approved by council in last year's budget but were understandably postponed due to the COVID-19 situation. These improvements are not a luxury, but a necessity for the 43-year-old city-owned building. Thank you, Bob Gray. From Ann McClellan. Dear City Council, I have two adult sons who play hockey at the Batavia Rink their entire growing up years. They played as Batavia High School ice devils also. Hockey taught them: discipline, discipline, discipline; professionalism; dressing up on game days; showing up to a host rink looking professional; being on time for practices, schools, and games; how to deal with conflict; coaches, refs, and other teammates; teamwork; rewards; having their picture on the front page of the paper; medals and trophies from tournaments; self-esteem; winning several state championships and out-of-state tournaments. They also created lifelong friendships, as did we as parents, spending so much time with our hockey family. Both of my sons are now extremely successful in their careers, and I attribute much of their success to lessons learned through hockey. I now have a grandson who started in the beginner program when he was three, and now, last year, a might. I can only hope he has the same experience with hockey that my sons have. I also play and take advantage of the adult ice times and am thankful to the Rink for giving the women's team a consistent ice time for us to host Buffalo and Rochester-area teams. The ice rink is an essential part of the community and affects positively the lives of all the players, young and old. I also remember the days when my sons played at the Rink hosted tournaments almost every weekend. That meant out-of-town teams coming to Batavia and staying at hotels, eating at restaurants, purchasing food at the Rink, et cetera, all weekend. This team would stop when Merlin took over the Rink. So many thanks to the Batavia Ice Rink. Thank you, Ann McClellan. From John Roach. The idea that the city of Batavia would lay off a worker and not build public safety jobs while funding the salary of a non-city employee who works for the Batavia Development Corporation is outrageous. What justification can this council give to take a code officer's job and stretch public safety employees with a hiring craze but pay somebody who does not directly work for the city? Cut the approximately $70,000 from the BDC and use the money to keep the code enforcement officer or to hire either a police officer or firefighter. John Roach. This just came from Ed Ward. It says Elizabeth Carr, Market Manager, Sams. Thank all of you for your hard work in the care and keeping of our city during this pandemic. We appreciate this opportunity to stand before you in hope of finding the best path going forward. While you, while all of you have been working to keep Batavia safe and stable, much has transpired in the world of food. To that point, legislator Rochelle Stein pointed to the success of a local hero in Tammy Hathaway, the director of United Way. Tammy worked with FoodLink and the Salvation Army to feed our own this winter. It is my hope that the farmer's market can help Tammy continue to grow that success. Also, the USDA awarded two contracts, $42 million and $14 million, to organizations that are located outside of our area to feed those in need in our region. The University of Oxford defines a food system as "all processes and infrastructure to feed a population." The kindergarten explanation for illustration purposes is that our regional food system allows middlemen to pick our fields and farmers clean in a county where agriculture is our main revenue. Middlemen then process our food, add preservatives and chemicals, before redistributing it back to us at a higher price point. This negatively impacts our farmers, our environment, and our bodies. Please help your farmer's market change this. Thursday, January 28th, the Farmer's Market Board of Directors meets for the first time since October. My wife has been directed, my wife has been directed to spend this winter studying best practices of farmer's market around the world. She is also working to complete the Farmer Market Certification Program under the direction of the Farmers' Federation. A fresh start for the market is underway. The focus of the 501(c)(3) nonprofit is education, as the team works to improve the local food supply system. Education is paramount. If you do not know anything about food systems, you cannot make informed choices about what to serve for dinner tonight. The farmer's market team never knew what land options were available as a permanent location. Thank you for allowing them to stay at Elba and Bank for the 2021 season. It has been suggested that Austin Park is a potential forever solution. Money and funding will come to the market in due time. Batavia stands to benefit greatly by changing our food system because this is a national concern which took center stage this winter. Until the market has legs, we ask for your consideration and help. Our customers from the YMCA, Office for the Aging, Jerome Senior Center, and the hospital could benefit from transportation assistance to the new location. Many employees and senior citizens depend on us for their daily dose of healthy eats. It is a long walk for an employee to get outside the large hospital building, let alone adding two more blocks, make a healthy lunch a luxury instead of a daily choice. Our senior citizens lack both energy and mobility to walk the extra two blocks, shop, then return home again carrying their produce. Perhaps a trolley could be a fun solution. Members of the market will ask Beth Kemp to bring Rachel up to date after the board meets this Thursday. Thank you for your time, your hard work, and your consideration. That's all. Ed Ward.
On behalf of Betty Carr.
Right.
I wasn't sure what I heard there.
On behalf of, was my understanding.
Yeah, and then it says Elizabeth Carr, Sams. So then I just, I believe.
One other thing, you said that they were going to be allowed to use them for a year. Can you look it up? Did you say 2021?
It says, "Thank you for allowing them to stay at Elba and Bank for the 2021 season."
Why did we do that?
We did, you haven't done any council action to allow them to stay there. Previously, during the summer, when we were talking to board members and we were looking at the timing of the feasibility study for the police station, we thought it might be feasible for them to stay there depending on what activities needed to happen. But then a lot of dialogue and conversation happened in between then and now. So the council has made no decision, nor have they put in any application that I'm aware of, to utilize that site this year.
Thank you. I wonder if we missed anything. Any, any council response to public cards? Communications?
The next city council business meeting to be held on Monday, February 8th, 2021, 7:00 p.m. City Hall, Council Boardroom, second floor. Also, budget work sessions are one tonight after this meeting, which will be covering the DPW portion. Monday, February 1st, at 6:00 p.m., we'll be covering the fire, police, federal government, and administration. And Wednesday, February 3rd, 6:00 p.m., with me. Any questions or concerns on that card? BDC 2021 presentation.
Can you reboot it?
Yeah.
A lot is on.
You always have so much drama in your life.
I've always been a poop man, and it just keeps coming my way. I'm on my own all week, my wife's with the baby in Florida helping out for a week.
Who had a baby?
My, my wife's son.
Well, congratulations.
And also a great grandfather.
Holy crap.
Yeah.
You're almost out of time.
Ah, thank you, thank you. Council President, members of council, I thank you for allowing me to present to you today. For those whom I have not met, my name is Andrew McGuire. I am the Director of Economic Development for the Batavia Development Corporation. If you recall, last year's presentation, council, focused on topics like, why is economic development important? I discussed the demographic information and the projected decline of population across the city and county, especially between the ages of 25 and 64. I also discussed indicators showing the majority of the city's labor force is compromised as comprised of commuters who do not reside in the city. I talked about the city's aging housing stock, and that younger generations are moving away from the traditional purchase and rehabilitation of homes to quality rental units that are closer to the amenities that accommodate their lifestyle. All of that information remains true. It is further documented and identified in the formalized studies and comprehensive plans the city has adopted. For this year's presentation, I would like to address the Batavia Development Corporation's history of success through various programs and the economic impact they carry. I will touch on the current projects and programs the BDC is working on in the city. And lastly, I will talk about the BDC's future goals and continued economic development. Established in 1994, the BDC works to improve the quality of life within the city of Batavia. We work to encourage and retain small businesses, promote employment opportunities, and retain and enhance the community's fiscal base. I'd like to walk you all through a project, a transformative project that we all know as Eli Fish and Newberry Lofts. 10911 Main Street, built in 1881, was the original home of J.J. Newberry for over 60 years. Assessed value of the building in 2015 was $250,000. It was in need of substantial rehabilitation and vacant for several years. It was purchased in 2015 with a vision of a brewery restaurant and seven market rate apartments on the second and third floors. The BDC applied for and secured a $500,000 New York Main Street acre grant for the Rose Project. The BDC saw other funding sources, such as a $100,000 National Grid grant. In addition to those, the BDC secured a USDA Rural Business Development Grant for a project inside of this project, a first of its kind in our area, restaurant incubators inside a brewery, which was going for freshman. The project begins in 2016 after the capital stack, which is the funding, aligned to rehabilitate the basement for brewing equipment, first floor into a restaurant and two incubator spaces, and the second floor to house four market rate apartments. The total project cost to complete this was over $2 million. The BDC played a critical role in project setup, capital stack, project and grant administration to see this project through to completion. The BDC creates the Fresh Lab program, which offers cooking competition to entrepreneurs, and the two winners would receive a grant, a loan, and incubator space inside of Eli Fish Brewery to help them start their businesses. The project is completed in 2018. The results: a brewery, three restaurants, and four market rate apartments, and a once-vacant historic building that was in need of substantial rehabilitation, like many of ours in downtown. The assessed value of the property increased from $250,000 to $987,000. That also carried with it sales tax increase with four vibrant businesses in one location. Tour resume increased, having a positive effect on other local businesses, and the creation of more than 30 jobs and 20 temporary construction jobs through the project. More residents are now living in downtown Batavia who frequent other local businesses and likely live, work, and play in our community. This is just one project through the New York Main Street program that benefits across our community and the city's fiscal well-being, both public and private. The BDC has been successful in applying and awarding to three New York Main Street grants and a larger DRI grant, which also created the building of the Ruben Building. As you can see from this chart above, the BDC has helped to secure over $11 million in grant funding through these five programs alone. Leveraging those grant funds will produce an estimated $65 million of investment into our city. These programs will either rehabilitate or create 103 residential units and 96 commercial units in our downtown. These grant programs are extremely competitive. Our success rates to secure and execute programs like the New York Main Street are almost the best in the state. The vast majority of the grant funding the BDC secures are through state and federal programs. If we are not successful in being awarded these types of grants, a different municipality or organization will, and they will see the economic benefits instead of our city. We must continue to seek and execute grant funding that benefits our local community and will be a catalyst for projects like Eli Fish Brewery to come to fruition and be successful. These programs are bringing Batavia closer to obtaining our long-term goal of $100 million all in. The BDC is constantly seeking other granting opportunities as well. The BDC administers the revolving loan fund grant program that has had four projects awarded. We work closely with National Grid to identify projects that may be eligible for their grant programs. The BDC has worked with the USDA Office to secure grant funding and create programs like the Fresh Lab. The BDC works with many other organizations and state agencies to secure additional grant funds for projects in our community that benefit our community. What does the city of Batavia get from these projects and programs? It could be a very long-winded conversation, but just to highlight some, in terms of the assessed value, the projects the BDC has worked with that are未completed show an increase in assessed value of over $5.79 million from the previous assessments. These are long-term, sustainable revenues to the city. With an estimated $65 million of investment in projects that will be completed in the next one to three years, that too will increase the city's assessed values drastically. Placement to the BDC and to entrepreneurs and businesses we work with is very important. They want to be located in thriving communities, in rehabbed new buildings, and centralized. The BDC helps to facilitate placement, other projects like Main Street 56, lease previously vacant parcels from the city of Batavia, which will again generate income. Over 105 RLF loans to entrepreneurs in our city the BDC has delivered. We have also delivered sustainable growth to both sales tax and mortgage tax figures. We have increased downtown housing and created market rate apartments. We work to reduce unemployment by creating and retaining jobs. We increase tourism and foot traffic downtown through our projects, creating a vibrant and unique, walkable community that is attractive to all generations for years to come. Here's a map of business improvement district in downtown Batavia. The red dots indicate projects the BDC has worked on, on various levels. Most of these dots are grant awardees through our New York Main Street and DRI programs. Others, we may have consulted with to help them start the process or complete their process and their projects. As you can see, the BDC has been very busy in the past and currently working on more than 17 of these markers. There are over 30 project markers shown above in our highest assessed value area of downtown Batavia. 2020 has been a challenging year for many local businesses and development projects. At the BDC, we understand the roadblocks the pandemic has presented, and as a community, we have locked arms to help our businesses sustain and keep their doors open. An economic recovery task force was created consisting of the BDC, BID, GCDC, Chamber, Genesee County Workforce, governmental managers, and local business leaders with the goal of helping our community and businesses persevere through these hard times by sharing information and best practices. BDC has created a short-term loan deferral program to help local businesses who received an RLF, RLF, RLF loan fund and are making loan repayments. The BDC created a COVID-19 page on our website to disseminate information and programs available to local businesses. This has helped many of them navigate New York State's complex protocols. We have also worked hard to increase our social media presence for real-time updates. BDC has helped facilitate local businesses and organizations take advantage of federal and state programs, such as the SBA Paycheck Protection Program, Economic Injury Disaster Loan, Moving New York Forward, Unemployment and Labor Programs, up to the most recent raising the bar and shuttered venue operators grants. We explored creative ways and concepts to help local businesses through the pandemic, such as additional outdoor dining areas for restaurants, which the council passed, and the potential concept of parklets to increase capacity allowed by the state integral of the local. As we move into 2021, we are all hopeful to get through these tough times together. We must continue to be vigilant by practicing social distancing, wearing a mask, and shopping mode. The future of the city of Batavia is bright. In 2021, we anticipate several milestone projects to commence construction with a total investment into our city of over $50 million. Through these three grant programs listed, we currently have 17 projects at various stages, from environmental testing all the way to under construction. The BDC will continue to play a role in either direct administration of these programs and projects or critical administrative support to see these projects through. Most recently, the BDC applied for another New York Main Street acre grant and will continue to leverage grant funding for private investments into our city. The city of Batavia is known statewide as being an economic development-friendly state. It is evident by our success. Lieutenant Governor Hope Hope attended our chip conference. The city has also led a case study for several New York State Department of State smart growth articles that showcase our creative ways to spur economic development and rehabilitation. As shown with this simple prospectus brochure, the BDC has implemented unique programs that will result in successful development. We will continue to work with our business development partners to create a brighter future for our city and highly our area for future developments. We will promote the VRI and New York Main Street projects and all the transformation the city will be seeing in the next one to three years. These programs are attractive to development. We will use our BP2 fund to spur public infrastructure improvements. Eligible city projects can vary across such as water and sewer line work, sidewalk work, green space, gardens, roadways, all things that benefit the community as a whole. We will continue to develop our brownfield or Batavia opportunity areas and address those key findings and needs. We have a goal to make these bone parcels ready for development and poised them to be eligible for the brownfield cleanup program. Once developed, they will bring substantial private and public investment into our city and better our economy and our fiscal position. In closing, I am excited about the future of our city and our community. We have many transformative and catalytic projects on the horizon, and we do not want to stop there. We will see more shovels in the ground and cranes to the skies in 2021 and well into the future. As one project or program is completed, we want another one either beginning or waiting in the wind to begin. These projects and programs create a vibrant city people want to work in, live in, and play in. A one perspective colleague of mine told me when I began with the BDC that economic development is not a sprint, it is a marathon, and I could not agree more. Although I will say sometimes we do have to sprint to take the lead. The results we obtain and the future goals we shall obtain will carry a positive impact on our city's quality of life for generations to come. It is critical we do not lose sight of this, and we continue to have boots on the ground to help these projects from the starting line to the finish line and continue this process for years to come. Thank you, council members, for your guidance and support and for allowing me to present today.
Any questions?
Andrew, where are we with the Elegance Station?
Elegance Station is poised to close by the end of this quarter. So what that means is they're going to tie out the HCR funding, all the different tax investors that they need to execute, all the grant agreements that still need to be executed, and they are planning on construction starting early spring of 2021.
Okay, so if it doesn't close, what happens then?
We would have to look at what our options are, I would say, moving forward.
I know, gluttonous. They're doing a marvelous job over there on, above Sabaline, and that's fantastic. And if you look across the street, it looks like, I don't know what, okay? It's deplorable. And people look at that coming in our city and going out of our city. So by the end of March, you think he'll be able to do something?
That was my last communication with the organization, was I said, early spring they would have construction starting.
Okay, so we don't get anything at that time, then I hope we'll be able to do something to give it to somebody else or do something with that. Thank you.
Andrew, I have two questions. One, without receiving all the grants, since you've worked so hard on other people, how many of these businesses do you think would move forward on their own?
Very little. It's very difficult to fund a project fully without some sort of support to help that fiscal stacking or capital stacking. Typically speaking, there will be some, for sure, but those are typically people with deep pockets that own quite a bit of real estate, maybe do this day in and day out as a developer. You know, our average building owner in downtown would be hard-pressed to have this project completed fully funded by themselves.
I don't know many developers that spend their own money. Mr. Jamal, he's not here, he's in Buffalo, but.
And that is, and that goes to the capital stacking, like Elegance, it's all the different pieces that come together.
Alleviate some concerns. I mean, you more than, you more than earn our expenditures for the BDC, there's no doubt about it, the money coming back in for taxes and all sorts of grants and everything else. 2020 being a very difficult year, how many dollars worth of grants do you think you received last year?
In terms of grants we received, well, in 2019, the city was a recipient of the $300,000 New York Main Street Grant. In terms of total capital investment, we closed the books at over $20 million this year, projects that have commenced to construction phase. So that's a pretty substantial investment into our community. You won't see those assessed values increase during the construction. It's typically post-construction when they're reassessed, reevalued, and then you'll see the tax revenue size that to the city taxes. So yeah, we had a very good 2020 despite COVID, all the restrictions, and construction halting for a couple months.
Well, it's the one beauty of government. Spend millions of dollars and develop a project, make it look nice, and then the next day the guys are saying, please, thank you. Here's your new, your new value. Thank you, I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Can I follow on that question? And of those grants, I'd just like you to explain, what are the admin fees that you're able to obtain in grants? Because I know when I worked for the BDC, there were very few and far between.
In terms of like the New York Main Street, how much is poised for the administration?
For the BDC administration.
Sure, actually, a sizable amount is typically for BDC administration is very, very limited. limited, unfortunately, it's actually zero. Typically, the administration part of it would be for the environmental screening and testing, as well as the ship out testing and screening. So those are a little bit higher level where you need a third party to administer those and execute them. So unfortunately, the BDC sees very little of those funds coming to us.
Is that why I see for the $10 million DRI grant, it shows ninety-four, nine point four million instead of ten? Is that six hundred thousand going to, what is that called?
That actually is the DRI Building Improvement Fund. I wanted to separate those two out because there are two types of programs, so between the nine point four and the six hundred thousand would equate to the ten.
Right. And I noticed you didn't include the Sabalot building on this, maybe because it's already constructed, this project started? So what was that project's value?
That project, I believe, was three point one two five million dollars.
And they had only about a million from the DRI?
I believe they had one point one two five, yes.
So basically, they're basically...
Two million dollars.
More than a million, they're putting their own money.
Correct.
And that's what I wanted to point out, whenever you get questions, that eleven point three million dollars pretty much sparked fifty-four point five million dollars of private money coming in, so that's a one to five ratio. So I mean, for ten million dollars or one million dollars investment, getting almost fifty-five million dollars of private investment in the community, that is bound to show some kind of bonus to everyone, whether the city, the taxes, the community that would use those facilities. I mean, that's a lot in a short period of time.
Andrew, who oversees the Fresh Lab, that whole concept over there, Eli, is that still in existence?
It was. The USDA, I believe the agreement, and this was prior to me, I think even prior to Rachel in this position, was a five-year agreement of maintenance of the equipment. We were technically a pass-through grant agency for AGDR Properties, which is the owner of that building, Eli Fish. So after that five-year maintenance period expired, which I believe it expired in August of 2019, the Fresh Labs program is now carried by Mr. Gray, the owner of Eli Fish and that crew. So the BDC is somewhat out of the Fresh Labs program at this point.
I just wanted to be sure. And just a comment too, you guys do a wonderful job. It's unfortunate, and I understand why, but it's unfortunate that the general public doesn't, they're not able to see that benefit directly because they're not privy to, you know, what's going on behind the scenes and all this money that you, all this grant money that you acquire. They, most, I think most of our citizens don't have the ability to see that. So I appreciate the report and hopefully the public will be able to see exactly what you guys do on a day-to-day basis, which benefits the entire community.
I just wanted to piggyback on what Councilperson Canelli said. You know, the public doesn't really know, but because of these excellent updates that he's giving us, he's letting the public know this is what's going on. I mean, this update is outstanding, so now they're going to get a better understanding of it, so I beg for that.
And to jump out, you said about a marathon, a lot of these, some of these projects have received New York State assistance with taxes and so on, deferments and whatnot, and that, I understand where people can get upset by that. But looking to the future, the city needs to find other ways to get some income besides just taxing the homeowner and taxing the business owner. This way, with more valuable properties and more businesses coming in on that scale, it offsets and it takes a bite out of it for the average person. So you may not realize it right today because all these projects are being built, but in five, ten, and so on years down the road, that money is going to be welcome to future administrations because that's going to be some income coming in along with increased tax revenues and so on from the businesses that they do and the tax that they charge. It helps, that helps all the way down the line. And so we're always thinking of ways to keep economic progress moving, so that helps the city and takes some of the tax by the way. So thank you for the hard work that you've done.
Yeah, I'd just like to point out, and I think everybody here is aware, but right now as we approach the budget season, we're going to get a lot of this not in my bank here stuff going on, and it's always difficult, it's difficult for anyone. Don't take mine, but take his, that's a good idea, it's an ethical plan. You know, we have a governor that's trying to spending his way out of our debt, and that didn't work. Now he's starting to sue the federal government if they don't give him the money, and you know, they're going to say, hey, we have better attorneys than you do. And he's, we don't know, and I think Rachel, we've seen a lot of changes here in the past week. Today, he's making more changes now what he's going to cut. So we're in for some rough times, we're in for some cuts, and we have to make cuts, and we have to do them fair and what's best for the community. So I just hope the citizens can bear with it. I think everyone here is trying to keep in mind that we don't want to raise property taxes, that's the most counterproductive thing you can ever do, so.
Especially when everyone's hurting.
Yeah, kick them when they're down.
Yeah. Anything else?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andrew.
Please reform presentation. Are you using the projector as well?
Yes. All done. So before we begin, I would just like to say, Chief Hybush, Assistant Chief Camp, the PBA President, I'm going to say his name wrong.
Anthony Boitazak.
Boitazak, thank you. And members of City Council, especially Councilmember Briggs for their participation, as well as all the citizens and local leaders who were meeting in person for several, two and a half months, and then transitioned to Zoom to have the stakeholder meetings regarding policing in Batavia. Everyone really stayed on topic and stayed focused and stayed respectful to the task at hand, which came to us in June, I believe. And council got the first review in August 2020 in terms of setting up this group. The executive order, yeah, June 12th in 2020 was issued, and it directed all of our local governments to develop a plan to evaluate how the police force was conducting themselves and if they were up to 21st century standards. I am happy to report that our agency in terms of their policies and procedures, and then I'll pass it over, Sean, you don't have to go to the next slide, is not only meeting but exceeding the standards set forth and best practices in New York State and across the United States. And I think the group, we all got to have a firsthand view of that. After we got through those topics of our policies and procedures, understanding they were up to date, we got into different issues about how the community feels about policing in Batavia, what their response is, and came out with recommendations that we're going to share with you tonight. So at that, Chief, I'll hand it to you.
Okay, thanks. Thank you very much. So as Rachel mentioned, City Council formed the Batavia Police Advisory Collaborative Stakeholder Group, say that fast three times. In September of 2020, we conducted seven meetings. There was a community survey that came out of this and well has a focus group meeting as well. We had in-depth conversations on race relations amongst the group. The group was comprised of six resident representatives, Justin King's representative, black business owner, faith-based community, or nonprofit representative, as well as we had, uniquely, we had a lot of industry experts participate. So industry experts being people from mental health, Department of Social Services, Justice Justice, anything that's linked to the long course of the world. We tried to bring them to the table so that everybody on the group had an understanding of just how in-depth and varied our work is to get a really good perspective of that. As Rachel mentioned, we went over in-depth a lot of the policies, procedures, and training the department does. We reviewed numerous policies, we didn't review them all, but we reviewed quite a bit of the highlighted ones. Our use-of-force policy, our bias-based policing policy, body-worn camera policy, standards of conduct, our community relations policy, as well as we went over different programs such as our problem-oriented policing programs or our net details, our power program, our police-assisted addiction recovery initiative. We talked about a lot of training for the officers, we went into detail about the basic course for police, a lot of the training that they get in service, such as de-escalation, defensive tactics, and of course Article 35, which is the defense and justification for the, as Rachel likes to put it, if you were under arrest, and once we say that, you can't resist. It was actually kind of an eye-opening moment for us when we had that meeting. Several people in the group didn't realize that once a police officer said you're under arrest, that was it, that you had to comply, and that it was a legal nothing to comply. So kind of a learning point we did. Again, we drew just kind of some representatives that we had from the industry experts, Restore Asecular Assault Services, Lake Plains Community Care, Genesee County Mental Health Services, Genesee County Department of Social Services, our Emergency Dispatch Center, Genesee Justice, which is the pre-trial release program here in Genesee County, and our Genesee County Assistant Commie Attorney, which is the individual that oversees the juvenile justice system in our county, as well as our City Batavia Youth Bureau of Investigation. Again, we had lots of dialogue, that was kind of the meat and potatoes of what we wanted to address, was just to have open discussion and dialogue between the community residents, the department, and the stakeholder group on a whole lot of different areas. Out of that, we created a focus group for the minority community. We put out a survey, everybody got to see the survey, it was online for about thirty days. We talked about studies addressing systemic racial bias and racial injustice in policing. We talked extensively about implicit bias training and educational opportunities on all sides, as well as opening the doors for continued exchange of ideas. Our community survey, our community survey, we're only going to go over a few of it, a few highlights of it. We had about fourteen questions on the survey, it was online for thirty days, there was just eight hundred and twenty-eight responses, which actually we thought was pretty good since it was only online. Seventy-seven percent of those indicated that they lived in the city. And the, sorry, the remaining words, I forget. As far as ethnicity, eighty-seven percent indicated their respondents were white, thirteen indicated they're black, Hispanic, Asian, American Indian, or Alaska or Halahtian. Ages, fifty-eight percent were over the age of forty-five, forty-two percent between eighteen and forty-four. We did get one respondent under the age of eighteen, I think Superintendent Solar Elske did that one. And then you can see the dead right now, some of the highlights from the survey, eighty-one percent of the respondents said that their opinion of the Batavia Police Department has not changed based on national events. So remember when we started this, this was right after all of the tumultuous activity that took place across the country, so it was very reassuring that, you know, eighty-one percent of the respondents did have a change in other interview departments. We asked what their last interaction was, if they felt that they were very professional, and then during their last interaction, eighty percent of them felt that they were extremely professional or very professional or professional. So the median there, the average, was professional. Seven percent had no opinion, three percent felt unprofessional or very unprofessional, ten percent chose not to answer this question, and a third of the residents indicated their last interaction with the Batavia Police Department was very community event. So I go into this question a little bit, and there's actually eight respondents that said that they had their last interaction with the department was due to an arrest. Five of those respondents indicated that the department was professional or very professional. Again, what was your last interaction with the Batavia Police? And these are a little small to read. Some of the answers were, I called number one, I never saw an officer, that was a traffic stop, community event. I was interviewed as a victim or a witness or other positive or negative interaction, and these are just some clips of the other. One of the questions is, what should the Batavia Police Department do? The number one response was provide more training and resources for the officers in area of bias-based policing and do more to address vehicle and pedestrian safety, that was a tie. Number two was assign more resources to assist those with substance abuse issues. Number three, assign more resources to assist youth in the community, and number four, engage more with the community. As you can see, all of these responses are very close, so they all scored very closely. Number one and number two were extremely close. We asked about transparency and information sharing. Most agree or were neutral to the question if the department was transparent and information sharing. Most were agree or were neutral in the question if they desire to see more officers in their neighborhood, and most agree that the department is responsive to the public when they require it. This one was, made me feel very, very proud of the officers that work for us. When they see an officer, how do they feel? So the general response was they strongly agree or agree that the presence of a Batavia police officer in my neighborhood makes me feel safer, and when encountering an officer, I am confident I will treat it fairly. They strongly disagree or disagreed with the question or the response, if I see a Batavia police officer, I get nervous that I may be unfairly targeted due to race or gender identity. So that tells me my officer to treat people very, very fairly. We'll get into some of their recommendations that came out of the plan. Training, implicit bias training, we touched on that a lot, we actually had plans to do implicit bias training as a department before COVID-19, and then we switched to no-in-person training, we were going to try to do it remotely, and there were some hurdles to that, so we are on top of that, we're going to try to get that done in short order. Our de-escalation training, everybody on the group agreed that that was a great training the officers have, so we're going to continue to do that. Mental health and crisis intervention, that was a hot topic, of course, it's a hot topic across the country right now. So one of the things that we're going to do is we're going to collaborate more with the Genesee County Mental Health Department to do a little more in-depth training, and there was also a larger discussion going on in the county right now with the other law enforcement agencies in the mental health department about having some type of response served from the mental health department. So that's something that is in discussion right now, we're trying to figure out how to make that happen. Community engagement, more foot and bike patrols. One of the overwhelming themes that came out of some of the narrative in the comments was they'd like to see the officers on foot, they'd like to see the bikes, so we're going to do our best to get that, that's all we can get. Now that the weather, maybe it'll change for us, we'll see. Creating a community liaison program for officer. So one of the ideas that came out is when we have some difficulties in a specific neighborhood and it doesn't rise to the level of criminal act, what about an elder, what about a community liaison, what about somebody that can go and help us just have conversations with the individuals because that trust level might not be there between the police officer and the individual. Continue to build on our special events such as National Night Out. You know, I think we've made it a priority over the past few years to ensure that we are present about any event the city has or is involved with, not just the city, but private events as well, and our National Night Out event is extremely popular, so we can have this test. Transparency, we've prevented to publish the Department of Criminal Justice reports on our department website. These reports are related to use of force that Department of Criminal Justice is collecting now, as well as statistical information that's available from DCJS. We're going to do our best to make that available on our website so that people can go there to find that information easily. The other thing that we're real proud of is we're going to implement what's called Crime Watch. Crime Watch is a social media slash website platform that will allow us to have two-way communication with the residents of the city. with the residents of the city. And we can get information out in a much smoother fashion than our current website. So, it'll be, it'll integrate a lot of our platforms, all of our social media platforms, whether it's Twitter or Facebook and others, to get that information out to the public a little more timely. Accreditation. We're going to continue to seek initial accreditation. We've had an officer working on this for, how long now, Chris?
About three months.
About three months to get our credit. So, we can meet accreditation. And then we'll seek our initial review, hopefully sometime later this year. And then re-accreditation. So, the re-accreditation occurs every three to five years, depending on your cycle. And that's just a little time. We're going to continue to use LexiPole to adhere to the newest policies and procedures that are accepted across the country in New York State. Civil service reform. This was a kind of a hot topic as well. And it's a hot topic across New York State with any civil service job. The system is antiquated. It's archaic. It doesn't allow you to hire, you know, sometimes the best candidate, unfortunately. It forces you to hire people based upon a test and how well they do on the test. And then they go through the other screening processes. So, there's discussions across the state on multiple levels to try to engage with the state to reform the civil service process, hiring process. Preferably, if you got a list of people, 100 people that pass that test, I'd like to be able to interview as many of those 100 people as I possibly can to find the right candidate, not just the top three. We're going to make an effort to recruit local candidates. Although I think we've done a pretty good job of going to the different job fairs that they had at GCC and of course through National Night Out and the different interactions that the officers have in different community events. I think we've done a really, really good job of trying to. We're going to enhance that. We're going to do what we can to try to make sure that all of the, all the people we hire come from our community. Special programs. We would like to continue our special programs such as the SRO program. That's going to be in conjunction with the Batavia City School District. We're going to commit to maintaining a DARA officer in our school district. We want to commit to establishing a citizens' police academy. So, much like our Explorer Post, there is one for adults as well that's very educational and interactive with the community. We want to establish such a program at the department. And we're going to establish an officer wellness program as well. What's next? So, today, the plan was released for public comment as a draft. It is on the city's website as well as the police department's website. You can go there. There is a feedback form that was created. So, if you just go to our website, you can look up the police reform plan, read through it. And then there's a way for you to respond to that. It will be emailed to us. We'll make updates from the public input as necessary. I believe those will be brought before council, before anything gets added. And then, I don't know if you want to touch on the rest of that. Rachel will.
Sure. So, tonight, we're requesting later in the agenda for council to move this to a business meeting at a later date, which would be on March 8. As the police chief said, we want to leave the plan online for roughly a month for people to have time to comment and respond. Those comments and responses will be reviewed by myself and the chief and distilled and brought to council to meet criteria, criterion for entry into the plan and council consideration. And then at the March 8 meeting, we'd ask for final approval of the final plan. So, right now, the plan is in draft form and is going to be available for a full month for community input. And Sean, I'll give it back to you. The last thing the city must do is send a certified resolution to the Office of Management and Budget per the executive order. But when we talk about continuing the focus group discussions?
Yeah, so our focus group that grew out of this was a focus group with our minority community. We had one meeting. It was extremely productive. We have committed to continuing that focus group discussion outside of the stakeholder group. It's not a public meeting, per se, but it does allow us direct communication with our minority community, our minority leaders in our community, to have open dialogue and work through any issues that may be there. Implementation of the plan, we'll come after. It's adopted. Should be noted that some areas of this plan will need to be phased in due to budgetary considerations because, as you guys know, nothing is free. So, unfortunately, there is, there is a cost to some of the ideas and the concepts that are in this plan. And we'll have to phase some of those in over time. And then we will review this plan annually, myself and the city manager, and updating as necessary.
Any questions?
I just want to say thank you to you guys for the support as well as the community for the participation. I know it was a little tough going virtual, not having the in-person meetings, but we still had really good dialogue. And it was a very good opportunity for us to have that dialogue with community members. So, I want to thank everybody that participated in this group. It was a really good group.
Sean, I have a question. Senator, a cost for some of the decisions? Just overall, what kind of costs are we looking at?
So, you're looking at costs for the time of some of the police department members? Potentially overtime costs, depending on, so, for example, the citizen police academy. If you want to run a two- or a three-hour class, you got to pay officers to do that. You know, some of the other things, community liaison, any other meetings that come out of this, you have to pay staff to be at those meetings. So, we're talking about costs associated with personnel.
Okay, various committees or boards, we have an appointment.
Yes, we do. We have one. This is not to the, to the youth board. Didn't sound right all of a sudden. I'm still thinking about the police thing.
Yeah.
This is not to the youth board. She does live in Batavia.
Yes.
And has been community-minded. The right person for the right thing.
Well, she used to work there.
She used to work there. And she could be on it. So, now it's just.
More than that?
I'm sure she would.
So, we're moving into tonight's business meeting?
Yes, I think so.
Is there an urgency for that? Or is it just, it happened to be and we're just moving it?
We had a special business meeting for two other matters. We thought we could put it on there.
I don't see a problem with it. I just was curious why.
I'm here to get it done.
Anybody have any comments or reference to this? Any discussion or concerns? So, are we in consensus to move this to tonight's business?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Budget ordinance.
Thank you, President. You have the annual budget ordinance in front of you for this evening. It outlines the budget that was presented to you last meeting by myself. And as you know, we will be getting into budget meetings starting this evening to dive into details. So, this would go to the, if moved to the business meeting, and it's asking you to schedule a public hearing for the budget ordinance.
So, would the business meeting go to that term?
Nope. It goes to.
The next.
The next business meeting, which is February 8.
Right. And so, the public hearing actually be held on the 20th second. So, it meets the guidelines on the 8 to have enough notice for the public hearing on the 20th second, correct?
Right.
Any questions or concerns or reference to that?
Yeah, under youth services. Are we still paying? Have we got out of the deal with the county manager? What's the status?
Nope. So, myself and the county manager have, they've agreed not to bill us for the first quarter while the city decides what we are going to do moving forward with youth services, whether we're going to contract it out or go back into the employee model. So, it's all dependent on the budget and the response to the RFPs, which we have gotten back and we're scoring now.
Okay, so, do we have any costs right now as we speak with youth services?
Yes, we do have rental costs because we're still in a lease at City Church. Let me see if there's anything else. The former director tried to wrap up everything in terms of internet and phone and make sure we weren't paying for any of those at this time. So, if we do incur costs, they're very minor.
Okay, so, what is her status?
Can we read to the budget talks, Chris?
Well, we're introducing this tonight. I was just curious because I noticed a substantial decrease.
Mm-hmm.
So, which is good.
Well, we're introducing the resolution for public hearing.
Which includes all this.
Right, I understand that. But this cannot change by the time we get to our budget. So, and we get the RFPs back. And I mean, we're kind of ahead of the game. I mean, you're free to talk. But I mean, I think it's going to be recashed all over again in a few minutes when we get into the budget. But, go ahead. Anything else? Any other concerns?
So, we consensus to move that to the February 8 business meeting? Okay, that gets moved. The local law amending the water rates? Did you want to cover that too, real quick?
Thank you, President. The next resolution is a local law number one for the year of 2021, amending the water rates. And in similar fashion, this is to schedule, provide public notice and schedule a hearing, which would also be held on February, or which would also move, I'm sorry, to the business meeting on February 8 with the hearing on February 22.
And this is pretty much in line with the plan that we've been finalized. It's a reference to the planning ahead for improvements and whatnot and slight increases over a longer period of time.
Correct. To make sure we can sustain the physical infrastructure owned by the city.
Anyone have any questions or concerns about that?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Jason told us the water rates weren't going to increase after five years. So, how come every year we increase them? Especially now with people hurting.
So, I wasn't here when that was said, but to the best of my knowledge, the plan that was laid out went 10 to 15 years. And it looked at the rates and how much we would need to increase on an annual basis to make sure we could pay for capital infrastructure. If you'd like me to look more into it and talk about it during the budget meetings, I'd be happy to.
Please.
Sure.
I would appreciate that.
Just as a note, this was covered exactly one year ago. And I believe that work led into the big detail on the whole history of, because that same question was asked. And he went into the detail of how and why that was decided to be done and what improvements were planned. And things have to be replaced. Ponds have to be dredged. And things have to be done. And there is no additional money for that unless you plan ahead for that. And then that improvement is then done because the money is saved up.
But doesn't it eventually go to the county? Yes.
That's the plant. But wait, 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 no. So, so let's distinguish the difference between the water plant as a physical structure and the operations of our pipes and the utility that we operate. Okay, so, the county plant is paid for through a county agreement. The operation of our pipes, the physical infrastructure in the ground, plus the service of that is paid for by the water rate. Okay, and we buy the water. We bring it to your home. You drink the water. You pay for the water. And then we're able to keep the pipes up to date. We're able to fix them with our crews. So, it's, it's two very separate things. The agreement we entered in was specifically for the plant. Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So, we consensus to move that to the February 8 business meeting? Okay. The bid district plan?
Yep, in similar fashion. Introducing the proposed local law number two of 2021, amending the business improvement in district plan and providing for public notice and hearing. The, we bolded in the, actually, we put it in red and bold. In the plan, the improvements the bid would like to undertake. Right now, the city holds the bid's capital fund, infrastructure fund. And it has approximately $259,000 in the fund designated for use in capital projects. The board has been busy planning what types of capital projects they'd like to undertake. And they have informed myself that they'd like to do marketing banners downtown, music equipment, and Christmas decorations with estimated cost listed here. We also, at the end of the plan, the last page, talk about the proposed rate. And the bid assessment is established rate of 1.81 per $1,000 of assessed value. And the estimated, and this isn't all finalized until after our budget is actually done, amount that we would collect for the bid for operations is $58,000 based on the current taxable assessed value. So, you haven't seen the district plan in front of you since I believe 2017, 2018. Myself and the director of the bid, Beth Kemp, went through it, added some of this language to make sure it was in compliance of what is going on with the bid. And Beth is here along with a board member, Leanna Durizio. If we can ask them to come up and just talk a few seconds on what the bid's plans are for the year? Thank you.
I don't have an amazing presentation. I can't really achieve, but I do. I'm passing around a list. And I thank you for letting me steal some of your time. I don't always have the opportunity to come and update you guys in full detail. So, I kind of wanted to just run down the list and give you an idea of what the bid has been working on, what we plan to do for 2021 moving forward. Okay, so, the list in front of you will start with the free Wi-Fi for downtown. This is one of our biggest projects that we've been working on. We continue to work with Spectrum Charter on bringing free Wi-Fi to the entire bid area. We've had several stakeholder meetings over the last year bringing all of the property owners that will be working with Spectrum on essentially allowing them access to their building in on those meetings. We've moved half that to implementation phase. So, the next phase would be install and connecting of all the nodes in the downtown area to activate that Wi-Fi. Unfortunately, due to COVID-19, that has been put on hold until the end of February. They have several engineers that come from out of state. So, we have a tentative date to move forward on that at the end of February. And I hope to update you more on that at that time. But we continue to be excited about it. The new Wi-Fi network allows for so many opportunities for our downtown. We have multiple channel control. So, our agreement with Spectrum gives us a max of five channels. One of those channels is designated for the free Wi-Fi in the downtown. And we will have time restrictions. So, each user will only have a max of four hours per day to use the Wi-Fi. Certainly a perk still, though, to all residents and visitors here. Additional channels will allow for future opportunities. So, for example, our local PD or emergency personnel to have their own dedicated channel to utilize at their discretion. And the bid is also interested in using one of those dedicated channels for possible music downtown, if so allowed. So, again, we're excited. Free Wi-Fi is very exciting for the downtown to be able to offer that to the entire bid district.[1716.42] Updated banners and signage, our design committee has been working on updating the banners, which includes the banners that go on the downtown light poles. We have not updated them, I think, in several years. We have a final artwork choice that goes to our bid board meeting this month, and once finally approved, then we'll be able to order and get those up. Last meeting I was here, we talked about the old snowflakes that we put up on the light poles for our holiday decorations. I think they're about 10 years old, some of them don't work, they're broken. The bid would like to reorder brand-new holiday decorations for all of the light poles. The speaker system, that's kind of next step after Wi-Fi is implemented. So again, our design committee is obtaining quotes primarily for music downtown. We're looking into wireless speaker systems that would attach to the light poles. Having music downtown just really brings a certain ambiance to our downtown, a positive vibe, which I think we can all agree coming out of the pandemic we're going to need. And so we'll continue to research best speaker systems and of course, work with Ray and the city on the best path forward for that. Downtown beautification, the bid will continue to purchase hanging baskets for the downtown as well as flowers for the planters. A huge thank you to the city of Batavia and our GTW crew for all of your assistance and partnership and always helping to get those watered and making the downtown looking great. So we thank you so much for that. We'd also like to continue the fall decorations, cornstalks, pumpkins, hay bales. We've also discussed possible garland options for light poles around the holidays. The marketing plan is really just focusing on how best to advertise or market for our small business coming out of the pandemic. During 2020, our promotions committee pulled together a ton of free advertising opportunities for our small businesses, and so we continue to work on some of those options moving through 2021, looking into offering commercials, print advertising, social media assistance, radio opportunities, either offered at a discounted rate or free to our small businesses throughout this year to assist them in their marketing efforts and getting back on their feet. We ran a Tasty Tuesdays campaign for our restaurants during 2020, which we would like to run again several times this year to get people back into the restaurants and ordering takeout. Tasty Tuesdays was a collaborative effort of myself, Andrew, thank you, at the BDC, and Jim Krencheck of GCEDC, as we were thinking of various ways that we could team up and work together to help promote our businesses. The next item would be downtown bingo. So part of our promotions effort last year involved the creation of downtown bingo boards, which I have also included, that's the second page in your packet. These were printed and distributed throughout some of our businesses. Most of our businesses actually printed out that QR code that's included, taped it to their door or window on their countertop, so you could safely just scan it with your phone, bring it up, save and play that way. Downtown bingo was a way to get people still out and about in our downtown, safe, socially distanced, still into our businesses and promoting them. So we're going to continue bingo through this year. We have giveaways for those that complete their boards and send them in with pictures. We have an upload link on our website as well as email opportunity too. So I encourage you to check out the bingo boards and see if you all know where those secret images are and where you can find them in the downtown. Which brings me to events. The bid has historically been the organization that coordinates most of the events, bringing people into our downtown and our city. It's one of our biggest goals as an organization because it draws so many people here and into our local businesses, but COVID-19 has obviously put a halt to most of those events. And 2021 doesn't seem to be much more promising until, fingers crossed, maybe later this year for events. So the list that you have in front of you, that's our traditional list of events. That's what we would typically plan for the year, but there is an asterisk next to several of them. Those events will only take place this year if COVID restrictions at that time allow. If for some reason we can revamp that event to make it socially distanced, and if not, obviously those will be canceled. The other events able to occur are the scarecrow contest, which has grown tremendously in the last three years. We opened it up to families in our community to compete along with businesses and organizations. This past year, we had 12 families enter. Total, we had the most scarecrows to date. And so we continued that same outreach with the wreath contest, which was the first this past holiday season. We had 30 wreaths entered into the contest, so we'd like to continue both of those contests into this year, along with we'll recognize Shop Small Saturday, which is a nationally recognized day for our small businesses. It's always the Saturday following Thanksgiving, so we'll continue to promote them at that time. And other than that, we are extremely grateful to have had the opportunity to apply for the New York Main Street Grant, so thank you again. We'll continue to look for other grant and funding opportunities for our businesses and our property owners. So I want to thank you for letting me steal a few minutes of your time tonight, and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Yeah. I have a concern about three items that we want funded under capital projects. You know, I was looking at today the state controllers management guide for capital projects, and it really seems like they should just be more of a direct purchase type of thing. They're finding capital projects or land improvements, land buildings, building improvements, vehicles, machinery, put sewer water, things that are longer term. I mean, normally something like this would just be one-time purchase. So why would that be under capital projects?
So I can try to help answer that because the definition the control is giving you is what a municipal considers a capital project. It's my understanding that capital projects from the bid come from general municipal law, section 980(c) of the bid law. So they do list a host of other functions in here, which do include construction, installation of landscaping, lighting, physical aesthetics, and then it goes into improvements to enhance security, construction of pedestrian overpasses, parking garages, closing, opening, widening of streets, construction of ramps, rehabilitation, removing of structures as required, and then construction of fixtures, equipment, facilities, and apparatuses that may enhance a movement. Hold on, I'm getting there. It's in here. Provide for operation and maintenance of any district improvement. And I believe it actually said in here, Christmas decorations. Please, George, help me out on what section could I?
We discussed this, it's spelled out in the bid law. The bid law is more broad than what general municipal law would be in terms of municipal purchasing.
Decorating and lighting for seasonal and holiday purposes. So again, these are items that are physical items, and they will last and have a physical impact. So I believe they, the capital money that they have can be spent, and also that they are benefiting the entire district and not going to an individual land or building owner, that they benefit the entire district, which I think was very important when this fund was set up after the overcharges that were filed.
Yeah, I just don't, I don't want to go through that again. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So this could go to the February 8 business? So we consensus to move this to the February 8 business? You heard the presentation. At this point, now we're on the point of actually adding it to a future business meeting, which you said was sometime in March.
March 8.
So are we in consensus to move that, or do you have any additional questions or concerns about the reform plan that, before we move it? So we're in consensus to move that to March 8 business, if that happens. My Brother's Keeper.
Yes, thank you, Council President. The city and the former youth bureau director has been working with the school district for some time about being an honorary partner for an initiative that the city's school district is undertaking. It involves applying for a grant from NISA, the New York State Education Department, for a program called My Brother's Keeper. The program, from my understanding of it, and I will defer to the assistant principal, Julia Rogers, who's here if there's any technical questions from Batavia City School District, is that it would support residents of color from birth till graduation of high school to achieve better outcomes through mentorship, through community involvement, through college preparation, and all other aspects. So it's a targeted program. It's new for Batavia. I don't believe we've ever had this before, and they're asking that the city sign on to say, yes, we support this, we think it's a good idea, and that we would help in terms of advertising on our bulletin boards, introducing them to other community groups they might need to partner with, providing opportunities for students to meet with mentors at the Liberty Center for Youth. And lastly, providing the homework assistance that we do at our free after-school program when it's running at Liberty Center for Youth. So this came to me just a little bit late. They do need to apply by January 29. So I am asking that if you do move it to business, you move it to special business tonight, because they do need a municipal sanctioned partner as part of the application process.
Questions?
It depends. You can ask me if you don't mind.
How come girls aren't included in this, and all students? You're singling out a group. Okay.
So this program started with President Obama a few years ago, and basically it is based upon the data that is out there that shows that students of color, children, young men, do not have the same opportunities. It would be one of those programs that is focused for students of color, but a lot of the ideologies and pieces to it, for instance, the mentorship, we would also be continuing with other students under a different type. But My Brother's Keeper is a program that is offered through many districts, and basically it shows a partnership to help these students. For instance, in Batavia, our numbers in the UPK program are low for students of color, and to work with families from birth to school age to encourage the education and teaching how to educate your children at home. And there's a lot of support to that mentorship. And then moving forward to looking at our John Kennedy population and looking at our STEAM and our innovators clubs to get students involved in education and have those mentors come in and work with students. It would also lead to the other levels of school for educational opportunities at the college level, or also business opportunities. So it is basically bridging that gap in our agency possibilities for students to have opportunities. And I understand where you're coming from, where it's calling for just the students of color.
Correct.
But in reality, those students are the ones who are having difficulties, and there are major gaps for those students. So what we're looking for is to have this program and to be able to bridge from it so that our students in all aspects of school, in all ethnicities, in all races can have a better opportunity in the city of Batavia.
So you're going to allow anyone to participate? Because if not, I find it discriminating, and it bothers me, all right?
Yep.
I'm not, you know, a racist person by no means, and this bothers me. Okay?
Yep.
So otherwise, then I am going to call tomorrow to the City of Liberty's because I want to make sure that there's nothing that anyone is denouncing here for any person. Okay?
Thank you.
Yep, and there is a link, just so you know, on the state website. And if you search the NISA website, it's My Brother's Keeper, and it goes through the grant requirements, it goes through all the processes and all the different data points, if you will, that the state has utilized, and it has, I guess you would say, from the different districts that utilize this program.
Thank you.
Yeah, I have a question and a concern over this. Under, it says the city of Batavia agrees to provide homework assistance at the Liberty Center for Youth Center, doesn't make sense, at the Liberty Center for Youth Center, to help reduce the dropout rate and increase the graduation rate. Who's going to be providing this homework assistance?
I can answer that one. We already do provide homework assistance to the children that attend the after-school program there. So whether we contract with a contracting agency, an RFP, or we have our own city staff there, it's already going on. So it's a continuation of what we're already doing.
Well, this leads to the other problem. I mean, with COVID and the cutback in youth services, and actually, right now, these services are on hold. How are we going to meet this obligation?
Well, I think everybody understands with COVID and budget that, you know, we could certainly add that language in there, barring budget.
Everything's subject to COVID, right? If there's a shutdown, whether it's state or federal imposed, and the agencies and the private sector, employers and businesses are going to be subject to whatever governmental restrictions are. And it's a situation that by virtue of government order, mandate cannot be implemented or provided per contract. It can't be provided. There's not going to be a breach or an obligation that exists that is being delayed or not fulfilled by virtue of government order. That's a force majeure position. So I don't know that we need to add additional clause for that because that runs up to the same circumstances during the COVID era.
I should feel comfortable with it.
I have some concerns. If I remember correctly, President Obama brought this to light somewhere in 2014, 2015. New York State adopted it in 2016. Now, you're telling me that the studies already show that we have youth in our own community that are identified as having concerns or troubles, and they're not at the same level. What have we been doing for five years? If we knew this, why weren't we helping these children five years ago? What are we doing in the school system right now to help these kids, persons of color or others that may need it? Why are we waiting a week before the deadline and trying to force this through without public input when we knew about this since 2016, or this grant was out there since 2016? So that's a concern of mine. I mean, that somebody, it took us five years to do something. Why? What are we doing in the school system that is not helping, or if we are, why can't we just continue that? Because, and I'll let you answer in just a second, the reason I'm going there is, I looked at the list of the 25 communities involved, and the majority of them are like twice our size. Ithaca, 30,000 people, the Bronx, Albany, Buffalo, Rochester. Dunkirk is probably the closest, they're around 11,000 population. So I'm wondering, A, how much money are we talking about, and B, do we need to do that? Shouldn't we be helping these children now? Shouldn't we have been doing that for like five years? How did we drop the ball on this? Especially with, not your concern, but I get complaints from people all the time, oh, their taxes are so high, and the school taxes are the major point of it. And they're expecting a service for the children of our community, and I'm a little upset that we've kind of not been doing anything for five years for these kids.
Well, I think that this is an additional program that we have the opportunity to be part of. We do, we do so much. We have a multi-tiered system approach to assist students, and we have had great graduation rates. I do not have those numbers in front of me.
And that's kind of what I thought, that's what I kind of thought like now.
So this is another program that we felt would assist us as a school district and as a community to bridge that gap, to offer more opportunities to students. And it is a program that helps bridge that gap and enhance and cultivate those educational workforce opportunities for students.
Well, now, my other question is, you know, it's just kind of odd that the school system is the fiscal and implementation agent, but we're still going to provide this service. Where is that money going to go in the school system? I mean, last I checked, the school system was in debt, and they had some problems, and they were talking about projected problems, and maybe a million dollars or more. I don't remember the exact number. But they were short, and there were some concerns about that. So how much money are they talking to apply for? Do you have any idea?
I don't have any idea.
And where is that money going to be used? In the school and on these programs to shore them up, or is the money going to be directed towards the youth bureau to assist with community involvement?
I can answer. You know, again, there was lots of conversations with folks from the county youth bureau and the youth director. I came in last minute, so forgive me, just trying to help them move this through. But originally, the plan was to partnership mainly with the county-run programs, the youth court and the youth leadership program. And I let them know that the city doesn't, we do direct programming. We don't actually run those programs while we participate. So we amended this agreement to show two things that the city does do that we could support. So I am the one who suggested these programs would be something we would be willing as a city as we move forward, depending on COVID, depending on budget, depending on staffing, to partner and to allow that center to be a place where the mentors and mentees and homework help can continue to happen. So I can't, I don't have the answer on the grant numbers, but I can tell you why these two clauses are in here.
Right. And I have to say, I totally think it's a great idea, but I'm like, where were we five years ago? Why aren't we helping now? Why wasn't this identified? And what did we do? And how did we miss it? And nothing personal, but it's just, I'm a layperson asking the question. I don't work in the school system, so I don't know what's been done. And I was going to rely on my colleague, Ms. Casino, and I was going to ask you these questions, but we didn't have time. This is already on the budget. This is getting pushed through tonight, and we haven't even done our budget yet, so we don't even know if we're going to maintain those services yet. We're voting on this resolution to partner in a grant, and these things might not be here.
Right, and the partnership is very passive, I would say. The partnership is showing community support for the school district to do this, city support, and if we have these resources, we will open our doors to assist the school district in this programming.
And I totally agree in providing the facility to meet and a safe environment. I mean, we have the facilities and it's a community facility. You're more than welcome to use these facilities. But I'm just concerned on cost to the city.
Thank you, Council President. This is a very important issue. We need public input on this. We can't, I don't think we can proceed without having public input. And I'd like the language changed to say all children.
Well, I mean, and there's probably, I mean, I'm not going to put words in your mouth. But from what I understand, there are plenty of other programs, but this is a directed, focused approach for a problem area where there is a statistical report of underachieving or under-successful opportunities. So I totally get that. If we have a problem like on a street, we direct police resources to that street. I think it's the same type of thing. But I get where you're coming from. But if others aren't having the problem, then those that need it should get that help. But.
That's fine. And, but I still think with something this important, we need to have the input of our students.
Well, and it's, the timing is the problem here. That's, that's one of the things I have is we don't even know what our budget's like. But as far as supporting it and moral support and not having the budget items to specifically make this happen, I'm comfortable with that part of it. But I don't know, within the next couple of weeks, we're going to be doing budget talks. I don't know where we're going to end up from here. And I'm, I don't want them to apply for that grant and then something come up beyond our control and we now aren't able to meet our obligations. I mean, I don't, that's just the concern is the last minute, you know, put it on, do it tonight. When we knew about this, this has been available since 2016. And I get that maybe we, you know, want to apply this year. But if we kind of had some notice, you know, like early January would have given us some time to at least vet this out, get some public feedback. And again, I think it's a great program to target individuals that need the extra help. That's fine. I have nothing wrong with it. But the process here and the rushing through before we know what our obligations are to the rest of the community, as much as I'd love to do it, there's just too many unanswered questions here. That's just my concern.
Yeah, I do hear the good answer to most personally. I like to ask, well, young girls of color, they're allowed this program?
Well, this, this program is for young men of white and color.
Thank you.
Rachel, am I understanding you correctly in that, given that we, let's just fast forward. We get back into the Youth Bureau daily operations, okay? COVID allows us to do that at that point. We figure out everything that we're going to do, whether it be a contract situation or a city personnel situation. Am I understanding you correctly that in order to help them out, it wouldn't cost us anything additional to what we are already?
That's correct.
So then my question becomes to my colleagues on council, would it be, would it be okay for us to approve this tonight to say that we're in support of it? And if we open the Youth Bureau back up and continue to provide those services, then we would provide those for this program? Yes?
Correct.
Can we do that?
Similar to Councilmember Byakovsky's request.
Right.
Depending on funding, language can be added here before it's signed off on if you were to move it to special business and approve.
We're willing to agree to do it, provided that we have those services to offer in the future.
I don't believe that would be an issue at all from the conversations I've had with the school district. I think they understand everyone's budgets are very, very difficult this year. And adding that language, I don't see it as an issue because we're still saying, we still support what you're doing with youth that need extra assistance at certain times in their lives.
Right, and if, like I say, if, if the budget allows us to, to provide those services that we are providing to our youth already, then what's it, it's not costing the taxpayer any more money to do that.
It would also help as a feeder program for youth to attend the Liberty Center for Youth because it may be a meeting or gathering place.
Right.
So to bolster the attendance there at the facility after COVID, it would also, there'd be synergies there as well.
Right.
I'd like to hear from the attorney. Do you have a problem heading that by any way, George?
As long as it means you're applying this to a grant, I don't think it's continued likely to be necessary. But if the council is concerned about the funding, would you like to add? I think it's your prerogative.
Well, just to make this easier, I printed out some stuff from the NISIC, or I think, what was the name? The educational web page that you talked about. And basically, the national milestones and the priorities are pretty simple. They're just ensuring equitable access to high-quality schools and programs. I believe our school is high-quality and we are doing that now somewhat. Expanding prevention, early warning and intervention services. I think that's a great idea. That's the national suggestion. Using differentiated approaches based on need and culture. That makes a lot of sense to me as well. Responding to structural and institutional racism. That can encompass a lot of different things. Depending on what side of the fence you're on, there's a lot of discussion on that. I think some of those words might cause some people some concern. But I think the concept is good. I understand where they're going with that. Making comprehensive and coordinated support services widely available. County with a lot of opportunities. There's a lot of services out there, but people may not be aware of them. So I think we can work harder to get that word out there, which is part of that, helping advertise things. So that's part of that. Engaging families and communities in a trustful, trusted and respectful way. Our police department has got some plans in reference to community policing. The school is also talking about that in here. And they're also going to provide transportation to the facility. So I think that's a good thing. They're talking about reading requirements, you know, children being able to read at a certain level by third grade. And that's all probably being done in our schools now. I mean, that's, the teachers are doing that as we speak. Then they're talking about encouraging post-secondary or educational or training, making sure that the school, the kids that do graduate have a chance to get employed. I mean, there's opportunities for that, too. We can always try harder. But again, I think it's pretty much in line. There's some, they don't cover all of it, but I think it's a good start. And as long as, the only concern I have is why the last minute? It just, it just bothers me without having public input and being able to talk to my colleagues offline on this.
I'm sorry you couldn't, but to alleviate some fears to begin with, the most important word that you said in there was expanding.
Right.
For all this time, before this came along, we take care of kids who come from families who are Muslim, kids who come from families that only speak Spanish, kids that are come from black families that have no money. We also take care of kids that have all kinds of money but don't have parental support. That's all been going on, but the word is expanding. When you're sitting there looking, you say, wait, here's another program we can add to our programs, is the point of the whole thing. Yes, it belongs, this one belongs to black young men. That happens to be one part where we're having problems. These kids are getting into trouble. That does not mean that other kids aren't. But this one program says, hey, we'd give you money if you'd work on that. Another program may say, we'll give you money if you'll work with the kids who only speak Spanish. It's just that that's what this program was meant to do. It's an expansion, one more great thing to do for kids. I'm all for saying we support it and we'll come up with the money if we can come up with the money. I think that's a wonderful idea to have. But it's not that we're taking it over and not that they haven't been doing it. It's just once, it's out there, it's a suggestion, it's available. I'd love to have them go through and take it. One more thing to help kids. I worked with these kids for a long time and it's all real.
I think that it is. Just one more question. How many kids do you think would be participating in the program off the top of your head? If you have?
I don't know. I'm sure there would be a good hundred kids, at least schooling to them.
Eligible, whether they participate or not. And just another thing, I looked up, the definition of people of color is pretty much anyone not of European descent. So that doesn't just apply to black individuals. It could be a lot of other people that could be in this program that could be helped by it. So we're not talking a very narrow band, but it does encompass a larger group of people other than people of European descent. So we're talking boys and young men of color. And so it's not, it's more than just black. There's other, it would cover certain cases, Spanish individuals, speaking individuals and so on. So it is grabbing a large group of people.
I just want to point out, too, when we look at us as a community, our youth today, our underprivileged youth today tend to be people who stay here in Batavia for a lifetime, okay? So if we invest in our youth to improve our youth in Batavia, some of these underprivileged, underserved youth that will stay in Batavia will be more productive community members as they become adults. I think that's something, you know, there's a lot of youth in our city, thank God, that have the means to go to college and succeed and a lot of them never come back. I have a lot in my family that wherever they happen to be, that's where they're able to find a really good-paying job and very successful in their careers. And they return for holidays. But some of our underprivileged youth here will probably continue to live here for a lifetime and it'll just make them better serve their community that they live in.
Yeah, I think it's a great program. It's just that a lot of questions and very little time.
Right, right. And you know what? Sometimes as part of council, we get put in a position where we have to make a quick decision in order to move forward. And that happens to us a lot. We have been on council for a number of years and it's happened a number of times. And sometimes we just have to make that decision.
Why did this happen? Why did this end, no notice, we get this this week?
Was it just something that last minute they found out about or knew about?
It's my understanding that no grant programs prior needed the municipal endorsement. So at 2:00 on Friday, I spoke, the grant writer contacted me and asked for my endorsement, which I could not give. I had to bring it before you.
And to ask for my, I was getting the grant opened up, have a meeting. Great for her.
Oh.
So it was kind of like you get to the bottom of the grant and it says, oh, you need a municipal partner.
So any other concerns or questions?
Yeah, I think we covered it.
Okay, so are we in consensus to move this to tonight's business meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I guess we're in. Public hearing to introduce a community development block grant, CBDG.
Yeah, so the New York State Office of Homes and Community Renewal has opened a notice of funding availability. And this is for the 2020 Community Development Block Grant Program. So it's while it's happening in 2021, it's 2020 funding. The program provides resources to communities to improve quality of life, economic opportunities. And in this case, the city is looking at several different infrastructure projects, which you'll see when we get to the capital projects resolution and later being as part of the budget to go after grant funding. Whenever we can use CBDG funding for infrastructure or facilities in the city, that's less money out of our reserves we have to spend. I've been working with the Director of Public Works and a grant consultant to identify the most competitive projects that we're forward and applied to. Two of the main projects we're focusing on right now is the potential to submit for the rehabilitation work at the fire station and Bureau of Maintenance, two of our facilities that have architecture and engineering done, but we haven't pulled the trigger on construction. The grant funding would help enormously so we didn't have to use our own reserves for those facilities. Or a water line, the Kohaktin Water Line, which we'll talk more about again during the, when we discuss capital projects. So right now, we're asking that this resolution be advanced to set a public hearing to the special business meeting tonight and that we do conduct a public hearing on February 8th at 7:00 p.m. Again, we're asking for this to come forward tonight. Because of timing issues, it has to all be submitted by March 5th.
So basically, we vote to schedule a public hearings, which is on the 8th?
Correct.
Then the regular vote will be done at the special business meeting after February 1st.
That's correct.
So there's that period of time, things to develop before we actually can file a vote.
Yes, and all CBDG grant applications require a public hearing. They used to be able to be held any time of the day or night. Now they're required to be held in front of your legislative body.
Makes sense. Any questions or concerns on that? Are we in consensus to move that to the special business tonight? Please, Kevin. Motion to adjourn. We'll go right into the special business meeting. Call the special business meeting. Need to take a vote, please. Sorry. Call the roll, please. Get ahead of us.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Byakovsky?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Okay, now called to order the special business meeting. Agenda items, we'll assign those first. Resolution 3, 2021, the committee and boards. Ms. Briggs? Resolution 4, the partnership with the school district for My Brothers Keeper. Mr. Canelli? Resolution 5, 2021, the public hearing for the CDBG program. Mr. Briggs? Is he the first one? Could you go up, please, Mr. Briggs?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to appoint members to various committees and boards.
Second to that, Mr. Byakovsky. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Byakovsky?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Resolution 4, 2021, Mr. Canelli?
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to execute a partnership agreement with the Batavia City School District for the My Brothers Keeper program.
Second to that, Ms. Pacino. Questions or concerns?
Thank you. I make an amendment to this to include girls and any student of any color. I need a second on that.
I don't think we can because the program doesn't allow it. So if we do that, the program's not going to allow it anyways.
Okay, all right.
I mean, they make their own rules on their own plane.
It's a grant program.
Their program is their program.
They don't design it. Yeah, that's a state, it's a state program.
Any other questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
With reservations, yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
No.
Byakovsky?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Resolution 5, 2021, Mr. Briggs, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to schedule a public hearing to provide information to the public on the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Second to that, Ms. Briggs? Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Byakovsky?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn to executive session, Ms. Pacino?
Whereas Article 7, Section 105, LE of the Public Officers permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to Article 14 of the Civil Service Act. And they're now therefore being resolved by the council of the city of Batavia that upon approval of this motion, the city council does hereby enter into executive session.
Second to that, Mr. Canelli?